Testing 123. This will be the October 15, 2014 City Council meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to call the order of regular meeting with the City Council of Satellite Beach, October 15, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Vice Mayor Gott in a moment of silence and a pledge.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, by my nation and my land, and universal with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like to open the floor for citizens' comments. Citizens' comments are on non-agenda items. Floor is now open. Here are none back to council. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, council comments.
Just a couple. Attended Space Coast League of Cities meeting on Monday night. One of the things I've been working on is putting together a fall prevention newsletter that is disseminated free throughout the county. I had several people sign up for that, and the newsletter is available if anybody's interested. It just kind of talks about some of the initiatives you can do for fall prevention. I think that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
I attended the South Beaches Coalition meeting, and there was nothing on the agenda of direct interest to us, to the South Beaches.
I was pretty busy. On the 4th, I walked in the Satellite Beach 5K with a bunch of people, and Courtney beat me by three seconds.
Yay!
Only because of the start time. We finished at the same time, but, you know, they got those things timed as soon as you crossed the line, so I told her to watch out for next year.
No excuses.
I know, I know.
Woman power.
It is, you're right. Also, on the 10th, I attended the Florida League of Cities Policy Committee meetings in Orlando. I sit on the Urban Administration Policy Committee, and their two policy priorities for the 15th legislative session are homelessness and sober homes. They were the same two priorities from last year. On the 13th, I attended the Space Coast League of Cities Board and the General Member Meeting. On the 12th, I attended the Satellite Beach Lions Club Pau Pancake Breakfast, and the Lions Club also did the breakfast at the 5K Walk. And I don't know if people, you know, really realize what the Lions Club does in our city and how, you know, how many functions they actually take part in, so, you know, thank you to the Lions Club for all they do. And I know they're doing the breakfast at the function that's going on on the 19th, which isn't really a city function, but it's the Volkswagen club that's getting together in Satellite Beach at the Schechter Center. Then lastly, today at 4 o'clock, Courtney and I spoke to a group of FIT graduate students and faculty on proactive planning and city management, and that was a pretty good presentation. I mean, we had about 45 minutes with them, and I'd say there were probably 45 or so people in the room, so it actually went pretty good, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I also attended the Space Coast League of City Board and Meeting and the Pancake Breakfast. That was great as usual. I'm not sure how many of them there has been, but quite a few. It's still a pretty good turnout. Also, to remind everyone, the Council of Florida League of Cities, November 12, 13, and 14. Check your calendars if you're attending, please make sure Courtney knows about that. November 1st is Founder's Day, so I think you probably got a message from Carrie if you're going to walk in it or be in it. Let me see. And everyone for dress, the next meeting will be in sports clothing tie.
Okay.
The same as everyone. And...
I have one more thing if you're done.
That on end.
The other thing I attended, I forgot, is the movie night that the rec department put on with the food trucks that was up at the Schechter Center on Saturday night. They had like 1,500 people, according to the numbers that I heard, that came out for that movie. One of the food trucks ran out of food. There were seven food trucks there, and it was very well-attended, and kudos to the rec department and the fire department for putting that together, because the proceeds from that went to breast cancer, I believe. So...
Oh, yeah, I did, although it wasn't the official opening day that was rained out for the library field expansion. I did attend in and out a couple of the Seahawk schemes. They're doing okay, as usual. I also did attend the Dudes Dress Like a Lady event for the Women's Center. Incredible, incredible turnout. Last I heard, they raised over $130,000 for the Women's Center, and for those of you who are available on the 27th, Governor Scott will be passing through, and we'll be up to Brevard County Zoo. And that's it.
Thank you. And then moving on to Agenda Item 5, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an event coming up this weekend, the Friends for Life of Indian River Lagoon Vintage VW Show Arts and Crafts Event will be held on Saturday at our Schechter Center from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The proceeds will be donated to the Brevard Zoo's Oyster Restoration Program, and what's unique about this event is one of our Public Works staff members, Phil Klein, is the organizer of this event. And you'll see, even with the Frozen event that we had this past weekend, that was done by our staff that donated their time to organize all that. So I think you see throughout my report, a lot of that where our staff members donate their time to raise money for our community and volunteer for events in our community.
You said that will be on Saturday?
Yes.
The 19th is Sunday.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, it's Sunday. I'm sorry, it is Sunday, sorry. The Pau Garage and Bike Sale will be on the October 17th and 18th at the Teen Zone from 8:00 to 1:00, and Teen Zones within the Schechter Center. And then we also have our annual Halloween Teenie Bopper Night on October 18th at the Teen Zone. And then, of course, on November 1st, we have our Founder's Day Parade and Craft Marketplace. This will be our 39th annual event. I thought that was kind of neat. I didn't know it was 39th annual event. So I hope to see everyone out. I did attend the Fire Department Reserve Volunteer Meeting on October 8th, and I've been kind of going to each of the departments to try to talk to them about, you know, the future with, you know, benefits and things like that. I did attend their meeting. I thought was interesting is that their reserve and volunteer meeting is with the staff and then their, you know, the reserve firefighters as well as just volunteers that make up this organization, and they voted to spend $500 on upgrading our squad fire vehicle for Twilight Santa. And then they also voted to spend $1,000 in funding for the Satellite Beach Cares Project, which basically provides for families, local families, who basically for financial difficulties can't have a Christmas for their children, and they use the $1,000 for gift cards for the older children and the parents. So this is something that they've done every year, and a special recognition to Paul Brandt, who's the, you know, pretty much the chief volunteer for that effort, and I always thought that was incredible that they'd spend that much time in their own fundraising dollars towards a project like that. Like the rest of you who serve on a League of Cities Committee, I also do that, and I serve on the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee. The first committee on September 12 narrowed their issues down to top six issues, and the issues were water quality, stormwater fee collections, septic tanks, renewable energy, sea level rise, and low-interest loans, grants for environmental projects. And I thought, I just wanted to highlight that sea level rise was an issue for a statewide committee, policy committee, that's made up of elected officials and appointed officials throughout the state of Florida. I do have one other informational item. I did attend the Capital Outlay Committee today for the school board. Unfortunately, the Satellite Beach and Indian Atlantic, Cocoa Beach, and Indian Harbor Beach schools were named as a cluster for a potential school closure if the sales, Hafens Sales Tax does not pass. I did confirm that the staff is only recommending those clusters if the sales tax doesn't pass. So they will only be recommending school closures based on financial issues, not on efficiency. So that, and that was a concern, what if it passes and they still close the school? So we know that now. The other school cluster was in Merritt Island. So the process would be if the sales tax does not pass, they will basically continue the process of closures, because that's what they had to start early, because it takes a long time. So that's why they had to name those. For the Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference, please let me know if you're going to attend, so we can go ahead and schedule your rooms and things like that. And then as for action items, I have two action items this evening. We are requesting a City Council Special Meeting on November 19 at 6:45 for the purpose of certifying the city's election results, and then the transition of outgoing and incoming council members will take place at the City Council Regular Meeting on the same evening. So if I could get a concurrence for that?
Yep.
Question?
Yeah.
Okay. I also have in your packet, okay, I'm sorry.
Because they're action items, we need a motion, because it has to be opened up for the floor.
Yes, that's true.
So...
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion first, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the Special Meeting on November 19 to accept the supervisor of elections results.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Montanaro, second by Councilman Bryner. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on this action item. Here are none back to council. Any comment from council? Here are none, nor?
Councilman Deane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilman Bryner?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Dea?
Yes, motion carries. So I heard, you know, since we don't have an election, it doesn't matter, we still have to certify it. We've checked with the county, so that's why we're going through this. Courtney?
Okay. The next item is I am requesting approval for two letters expressing our interest in partnerships for the establishment of health clinics for our employees, and one letter is to Brevard County Commission and the other is to the Brevard County School Board, and this would be for the mayor's signature.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro, comment from council. Here are none, open it up for public hearing on this action item.
Good evening, council. Roger Goodus, resident of Satellite Beach. This issue as far as having these clinics approved. Motion can be made, it can be passed. However, one should consider laying out an issue here before things are brought forward too quickly is what are the costs, what are the benefits? A financial review of how this helps us, presented to the citizens of Satellite Beach and to council members as far as savings and benefits and the cost side of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Want me to answer that? First off, that's what we're doing with these letters, to see how many of the other people are, counties and government bodies are interested in joining in with us. This is by no means putting a rubber stamp that we're doing it. It is so that we can find out the cost and how many other municipalities would be interested in it. Other municipalities have done it, and have had tremendous savings to their city, and we are doing this so that we can find out if this is a practical way for us to go with healthcare. Courtney?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6.
There was a motion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, apologize.
Councilman Bryner?
Yes.
Councilman Deane?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, apologize. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 6, Discuss, Take Action on Ordinance Number 1098. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1098, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Section 30-415.5 Sub-B, Sub-2, Sub-E, Satellite Beach City Code by adding clubhouses to accessory structures and uses in RM4 multi-family zoning district and amending subsection C4 of that section by amending maximum structure lengths in RM4 multi-family zoning district, providing severability, providing an effective date is the first reading of ordinance Number 1098.
Thank you.
Before we have a motion on that, I have some questions.
Ben, I know I do, too.
I just can't hear.
John?
Yes.
You want to go over this one for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
The, I should imagine myself met with the developer of the Ramada property.
Talk into that microphone, please.
The city manager, myself, met with the developer of the Ramada property. The intent was to explore some options to move that project forward a little sooner rather than later. There's another two years on the developer's agreement, and we're trying to look for some other options out there. One of them that was fleshed out was the possibility of doing two buildings versus three. The total building length wouldn't change, which is 531 feet. That's based on the breezeway. But if you do it as two buildings, they wouldn't have to phase the development, and overall it will provide a better product, I believe, in just the layout where you got a building pool, building versus, you know, building pool, building, building kind of thing. But it appeared to be an option that the developer was interested in as far as if we could do that. Right now, according to the developer's agreement, we cannot do that. There's three buildings, maximum 200 feet. What he would have to do in order to still get the 108 units that we're looking for as well as him was to make the two buildings longer than what the three buildings would have been. The, currently were, what was recommended by PZAB was 200 feet for, 250 feet for the maximum building length for any of the buildings if you were to take the two-building option. In the ordinance, we had put in the 240, and talking with the developer, he really does need the flexibility of that extra 10 feet, because this is just a conceptual design. And when you actually get down to the engineering, you may have a sheer wall or something that requires it to be bumped out a little bit more. So 240 feet is the ideal building length for two buildings each. He would like to have that at 250 to give them a little bit latitude.
So why wasn't the 250 put in the ordinance?
Kind of city attorney, would you like to comment? I think it was really the numbers weren't really adding up if you were to...
The reason why it was 240 was because the design plan that was provided to me at the time the ordinance was drafted showed that the building to be 240 feet.
We basically went with what was in the conceptual plan.
Which has it 240 feet. And that was the reason why it was drafted that way.
And you're saying that this doesn't necessarily cut it?
What we don't want to do is box ourselves into a corner. If the engineering, the actual engineering, and this is just conceptual plan, if that comes back, need an extra one foot, two feet, five feet, we couldn't do that. So we need to build in a little bit of flexibility, and that's why instead of 240, I would recommend we go with the 250. And speaking to Mr. Cossey, he feels that it's more inadequate to make sure that he can get the two buildings in.
Oftentimes, when you go from a concept plan to an engineering plan, it can change within feet, and that's what he's trying to ask for, is, you know, the 250.
I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out this document that we're supposed to approve tonight. So it actually, on the second page of this thing...
Second whereas?
Under 4B, it should be 250 feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then that would change your 531 feet now?
No, no.
It would not?
The only thing that's going to change is that anywhere there's 240 will change to 250.
So it's on the second whereas also?
Yeah, the 531 is the maximum building length for all buildings combined. That number comes about by the breezeway, which is 35% for that property. So if you were to take the 35 into 891 or whatever that total frontage is, you would come up with that 531. So that cannot change. What would happen if he was to do, let's say, two buildings at 250 feet? Essentially, that would end up going over the maximum building length, so he would have to, there's a rec center involved here, too. So that rec center would have to shrink down to accommodate that total length of 531. So again, the overall building length is not going to change, it's just the individual buildings will be a little bit wider.
Okay. The, this draft 2007 Development Agreement, I assume this thing was never signed, never...
No, this is, this is the amendment that we're going to, you're going to approve, or if...
No, I'm asking about this document that's called Draft 121407 Development Agreement for Oceana Beach Club. The document that we have here was not signed, and my question is, was this thing ever executed?
Yes, it was. This was just one that we had on file. It was really there as just a backup for, so you could see the total developer's agreement.
And you didn't have a copy of the signed one on file?
I could have provided that.
Yeah, okay. When this thing comes back to us as the Development Agreement, the next meeting, is this draft 07 agreement going to be superseded with the amendment being a standalone document? Or is it going to be, is the amendment going to be an attachment to this draft agreement that was actually executed?
I think I'm going to have, Jim, could you answer that one?
The amendment's just going to be a standalone agreement. It's going to be an amendment, too. There's a provision in here that says that the original agreement will be, will remain in full force and effect except as it's modified.
We gave you an example.
Yeah, this is basically what the amendment's going to be.
Okay.
Subject to change into 250 feet.
So then this original document here will still be in effect?
Correct.
Okay. And I noticed on page 7 of this document that the, under B2, the number has been changed to 250 feet.
Yeah, because we're trying to show you an example of what you're going to see at the next meeting that we're going to ask you to approve at second reading.
Okay. So this change to 50 will be a permanent change?
Yes.
Yes.
Then on page 2 of the amendment, which is going to come back to us at the next meeting, you're going to need, on page 2, under Building Option 2, you're going to need to change that 240 to 250 there.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Don't forget. I don't want to go through this again. All right.
Further questions?
Okay, so then with the amendment to ordinance 1098 of changing on the first page, the second whereas, the 240 feet becomes 250 feet?
Correct.
And on the second page, under 4B, the 240 feet becomes 250 feet. With that, I move to adopt ordinance 1098 on first reading as amended.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro.
I have questions.
Further discussion from council? Would you like to start?
I will. Where else in the city do we have RM4, and is this going to affect, this is the only property that has, okay, I wasn't sure. And then again, I had the same thing tabbed. I would prefer that if we have an executed agreement, that the executed agreement be in the agenda, because I was thinking, how do you amend something that was never executed? So that was the only two questions I have.
John, just a general question. What's the timeline for this project moving forward, getting kicked off and completion? I know we're kind of just general, but it'll be a question that will all get asked.
Well, we have Mr. Cossey here tonight, so instead of speaking for him on that, he's prepared to address that.
Mr. Cossey, would you like to come up and address, I guess, one thing Mark would want to know was, are you ready to move forward? Tell us your plans. Just introduce yourself and...
My name is Maurice Cossey. I'm the developer of Oceana Beach Club.
Good to see you again.
Thank you. And as you know, we've been here 35 years, and we specialize in building condominium high rises and mid-rises. We've built about 40, 50 of them among the coast in here. And in this instance, we're trying to expedite, like we had a discussion with some of you people, and the timeframe is very hard to predict at this point. We need to have all the plans and the permitting, which it takes, you know, and it's complicated. So we need to have all those permitting, and we need to bring the project into the market, and when we have all that ready, then we could proceed and build. So we're going to start as soon as possible to do the plans, and... Any other questions?
Let me just check. Does anybody else have another question for Mr. Cossey at this time? Fine, thank you very much. Any other questions from council?
So this agreement was signed in 2007.
Correct.
It's 10 years, 10 years on the permit, was that what, are we coming up for?
It was a 10-year developer's agreement. We're in the eighth year, I believe.
Okay.
It's 12 years.
12 years?
Thanks.
Because the statute's extended permits by two years. The legislature did at least twice.
So hopefully, we're going to get this done in this timeframe.
Further questions in council? I'll bring it back, but at this time, I'll open up for public comment on this Agenda Item. Floor is open. Here are none back to council. You know, we have a motion, and this property's been, actually, for those who don't have the history of it, we actually gained a very nice piece of property from Mr. Cossey early on in this process, which is one of our parks, large park, a few acres on the ocean. And so we've been working with this, and he was gracious enough to do this with us when we were in the process of acquiring the beachfront properties. You're right about that, Mr. Mayor. It was a very good process we went through, and you worked very good. Very well working with Mr. Cossey, and hopefully it worked out great for everybody. Any other discussion from council? Here are none, nor?
Councilman Bryner?
Yes.
Councilman Deane?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Dea?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll move on to Agenda Item 7, Discuss, Take Action on an Agreement to Hire Madison Government Affairs. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, staff is basically asking you to hire a, pretty much a lobbying firm called Madison Government Affairs. They specialize in military affairs at the federal level. And basically, what we're asking them to do is work to determine what the relationship between the military and the 100-acre property is, and how we can help that property move towards development. As you recall, Hunt Development was, Hunt Pinnacle had let us know that they were trying to sell the property. I understood later that the property is not under contract, but the, when we spoke with Hunt Pinnacle, it was clear that they would like any assistance in trying to get that property sold, and that they were working with the military as well as their bondholders to do that. We also understand that the Patrick Air Force Base has actually no intention for any additional military housing, and they have no need for that. So we are looking at wanting MGA to investigate the status of the property, the military's interest in the property, and provide recommendations to us on moving forward in assisting the property towards development. And I should note that the property currently is tax-exempt, and if there is no interest or need for military housing, then that may change. So with that, the retainer for MGA services is $3,000 per month. The proposal basically would ask them, they would get 45 days to come back to us with a plan of action, and then the way this agreement is worded, after that 45 days, we can certainly terminate the agreement, you know, anytime we want, but during that 45 days, that would be the minimum that we would retain them for. So if we get back something we don't like, we can certainly terminate the agreement at that time. But I think this is the best course of action, and I wanted you also to know that we did investigate their experience and their contacts with the people that they would need to speak to, and that we also made sure that other, you know, our current, like Congressman Posey's office and things like that knew who they were. I also wanted to mention that Mr. Hirsch, Paul Hirsch, who's a principal of this firm, also worked in the military doing real estate, so he's got a special background specifically for our needs.
Thank you. Council comments? Council comments?
You know, Courtney and I went and sat with Bill Posey a year, over a year ago, and talked to him about this issue. And basically, what Courtney is proposing here is kinda exactly what Bill told us, is that, you know, in order to expedite these things, you need help. And, you know, it's obvious that, you know, a general who's coming in and is only at Patrick for two years isn't really gonna make the decision that needs to be made, and we need to go above. So, I think this is gonna help us get above, and I think it's a good move.
I think this business seems to be ideally suited for helping us get, start some movement on that 100 acres. The agreement, is this one-page, two-page thing, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to talk about it. Has anybody read it? Well, let's start on the fourth line. It says, "MGA will provide services and make its best effort to assist Douglas County in supporting government relations." The last paragraph on that page, it says, "This agreement will commence on or about September 1." Well, today's October 15th. So, I would suggest that this agreement be amended to reflect that they're gonna help assist the City of Satellite Beach, and that each of these day, dates that are in here be moved forward commensurate with the starting date of October 15.
Okay. You can do it.
Any other further questions on...
And with that, I make a motion to approve the amended agreement with MGA for services related to the 100 acres.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Goddard, second by Councilman Montanaro. I still have questions I'd like, Mark?
Yeah. You know, Dominic, you're right. We've, we've talked to a lot of generals, I mean, a whole bunch, over the years. I've been up there with, back with our former city manager and met with several, and it just kinda kept circling the field, for lack of better words. Courtney, at the end of that 45 days, we can engage them, provide them direction, they can provide us direction to move forward with this at that point, right? And we think at the end of that year that we'd be on pretty good ground for moving something forward, or...
I think it, you know, it's, it's really hard to predict. So, I think after, when they turn in their first, you know, plan of action or recommendations, we'll, we'll be able to better judge the timeline, perhaps. But it is the military, and they move really slow. But I think after a year, we should know whether we want to continue or not, you know, at least whether we're, we're getting anything out of it, and so on, and we'll monitor it every month.
I think this is good timing for doing this. I, I agree with moving forward with it.
The military doesn't always move slow.
The money, where's the money? Was this money budgeted, or where, where's it coming from?
Yeah, we would actually do a mid-year budget amendment, and if we don't have a carryover from this year, then we would recommend taking it out of unrestricted reserves.
And then, I, I think, and I think I heard this, you said a representative in, in the cover from Hunt Pinnacle has provided conflicting reports on their attempt with the property. Is that the agreement for sale? What are the conflicting reports that came from Hunt Pinnacle?
They told me that they had it under contract, and they told the Florida today that they did not.
Okay. And then, I guess the big issue is government affair firms are, or you Google it, and they pop up all over the, all over the place in Washington, D.C. Why are we not going out to bid for this expenditure?
Well, because this, this particular company, I found, had a very specific experience, and they also are the lobbying firm for the Economic Development Commission, and every time they come here to meet for their military affairs, we can share the cost for that.
That's a warning. Thank you.
Do we have anything in writing that they will share the cost with us for expenses?
Actually, they would like to come to us, to our city on the 22nd, provided that you approve this agreement, and we've already decided to share the cost with the EDC for that. So, I can provide that email to you if that's something you want.
October 22nd?
Yes, ma'am. That's all for now.
Thank you. I do have some questions. What I hate to happen here is this thing gets to a snail's face and basically goes nowhere for a while. And then, we're out X number of dollars, and we're no different than we are now. So, I, I would like to, you know, look at it 45 days, see what they give us, and, you know, at least a month, every two months to see. If this hits a, we're not getting anywhere. I, I don't feel like putting out a year's worth of funds if it's not moving along, is all I'm saying on this. Not saying I wouldn't extend a little bit if we're starting to make progress and we're getting somewhere. But I don't wanna just flat-out say, you know, 30 grand or whatever that fee is going to be, and basically sit for months and we're really not moving forward. So, you know, I'm for it to get going in the 45 days to see what they're gonna bring us, but for the year, I'm gonna make sure we monitor this, and if we're making headway, then I'm all for it. But if we are just in a dead, if we're like we are right now, we're, I mean, I've met with the general, I know thieves try to get us in up there and meet, and, you know, we don't get, we're not getting anywhere. So, I don't mind getting to them places, but I sure don't wanna be back the same place we are.
So, are you proposing a kind of a month-to-month on this thing after 45 days?
We're gonna have to go into it for 45 days, 'cause that's what it's gonna take for them to...
Sounds like it'd be terminated after that.
Right. But I'm saying that 45 days, they're gonna bring us their proposal, what needs to be done.
So, my question is, is that 180 days, do you want to out at that point, or do you wanna build?
Out 30 days after that.
Is that right?
Anyway, built in here.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure we...
So, we can ask them for monthly progress reports?
I wanna see what we're doing.
I think that's fair.
But six months from now, we're not, I don't wanna spend any more money.
And I think it's really the first 45 days is what we're asking for. Because we just really, it's, it's odd, because we just can't get a straight answer on what the actual relationship between the military and the property is. So, without that information, it's hard to devise any strategies, because we just don't know what we're working with. So, that, that's their first, you know, marching orders, is to go figure that out. So, you know, I think after we get that report, we can better decide whether we wanna continue or not.
Thank you very much. Any further council comments?
Yeah, just one thing on the agreement. It's paragraph one at the end, it says, last two sentences, "Dealing with utilization of federal real property interests, water, and natural resource, Army Corps of Engineer Matters, as well as other agreed upon projects or programs." That, to me, sounds like a runaway train. I think if it's regarding the 100 acres, you're talking about a huge expenditure on the taxpayers' expense, so I just don't want the staff, you know, running up a tab on issues that we're not, or the council's not aware of.
Well, it's a $3,000 a month, not an hourly rate, so it's $3,000 a month retainer. So, if, you know, if we only use it for 100 acres, you know, we have other issues, then we'd be not getting our money's worth if we didn't use them for other issues, 'cause it's a $3,000 a month retainer.
So, basically, we're into this for 4,500 to 6 grand right now?
Yes.
But you also have to pay the expenses, so as you do more, you're gonna pay more expense on that rate.
All right, at this time, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item.
Ron Dragutis, resident of Satellite Beach. So, we've got additional things in the contract that they're gonna do for us. I thought it all involved 100 acres. And as Vice Mayor Goddard goes, has anybody read this? This is disturbing, that it's gonna tie up other money. And I bring it back to September 1st. That's what is on the boilerplate there. September 1st. We know there have been discussions here. Why is this not in the budget? We're gonna do an amendment. Amendments, amendments, amendments. And then, I'm gonna bring it back to another issue. Is this sea oats money going away? And you laugh. You laugh at me. Go ahead and laugh at me. But is it sea oats money? And there's some meaning to that. Thank you.
Thank you. To answer the question about September 1st, that's already been amended to start on the day we enter into this agreement. That is already there, so...
Dale Abrams, resident of Satellite Beach in the CRA. You amended it, but initially, it was September 1st, okay?
No, ma'am.
All right. Somebody tell me, what's in it for the EDC? What are they getting out of this? Okay? I think it's great that you're gonna do a relationship, you're gonna do it together, but what else is going on here? Unfortunately, a lot of citizens in the community have a hard time believing some of the things that are stated at these council meetings by staff and also council members, okay? So, it, why wasn't it put into the budget? Where is the money coming from? And are we gonna be spending more money going forward? And there's no guarantee. Want to add?
Please.
When we started speaking with Madison, or I started speaking with Madison Government Affairs, it took a long time to come to this agreement. So, they sent an agreement in September, and we finally came to an agreement now. So, we've brought it to you. The EDC doesn't get anything out of it. They already have these people under contract, so they don't, they don't get anything. So, yes, the Economic Development Commission has been using Madison Government Affairs for a long time. The MGA was instrumental in keeping Aftek here with the EDC and working to do that. So, Madison Government Affairs has been involved with the EDC for a while. They, they're already under contract. They don't get anything out of it. I just noticed their work, and I, and started speaking with them. The, so, I don't really know what else to talk about.
So...
Go ahead, throw me out. There's a conflict here.
Excuse me, you're on. Thank you.
There's a conflict.
Courtney?
Keep it up, keep it up. Please, someone want you to...
Yeah, I know.
You're gonna pay for it with your taxes.
Okay, thank you, apologize. So, basically, this company did what we, provided the service that we needed. And it was somebody that you could get background information that already did work in this type of system that we needed to work in.
Familiar with Patrick Air Force Base, and they're familiar with all the people that, you know, and they're based in Washington, so their traveler expenses aren't estimated to be any more than 2,000 a year, because they, they live and they're based in Washington. That's, so that's where they work mostly, and that's where they need to be.
So, to use what we're tag-along, we're using something to combine, so we're more efficient in the expense.
Yeah, so when they come to visit Patrick Air Force Base and the Economic Development Commission, they can also visit us, and we can share those expenses.
It's less of a learning curve, that's what it comes down to.
And we're sharing, again, the expense part of it.
We know all of our legislators here, because they work with the EDC, so, you know, it's just kind of a...
I need, I still have public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll bring it back in one second. Public comment. Steve.
Steve Osmer, resident. Just a couple things I'd like to bring to your attention. Right now, as far as the military goes, and we know we're talking to the general and stuff local, but if you want to have travel within the Air Force right now, that takes a signature of a three-star general, which is the 14th Air Force, in order just to travel somewhere for a week. I bring this to your point, is, we can talk to the general here to our heart's content, but this general here is not gonna make any decision on it. This general here cannot make a decision whether to pay for somebody to go to a school for a week. That goes beyond her, beyond Space Command, to the 14th Air Force to make that decision. So, talking to somebody here locally about the 100 acres is not, is never gonna help us. We have to go all the way around and get it on top of that. So, I think this is a good way to do it. However we do it, we're gonna have to go all the way to Washington to do that, or it will take us forever to get this way. The second point I'd like to make is, you know, I've listened to a lot of meetings here, and I've listened to a lot of citizens who always keep talking about, we wanna lower our tax, our taxes here, we wanna lower our taxes. We're never gonna be able to lower our taxes if we don't get a bigger tax base. And we can't get a bigger tax base unless we can start spreading this out amongst more people. We can't get more people unless we develop what we have up there. So, it may cost us a little money, I think, in the, in the beginning, but in the long run, if it can go through, and if it does work for us, and we can expand that, we should be able to expand the tax base and give what the citizens are asking for anyways, which is lower taxes, which is ultimately, I think, what we're trying to get here. And providing services and providing all this up there to the 100 acres now, which we're basically doing for free, makes no sense anyways. I mean, again, us taxpayers are paying for the services that those people are getting up there now. So, we need to recoup this somehow, and we need to do it soon. And like I said, talking local is not, is not gonna get us anywhere. Again, you, you can't talk to them to get anything signed just to go to school for a week. So, talking to them about the 100 acres is not gonna get you anywhere.
Thank you very much. Floor is still open. I got Steve? No, Steve?
Steve Edley, resident. I'll be honest with you, I too am troubled by the budget, if part of this. This was obviously in the works, was obviously part of the plan, and for it not to have been budgeted and then removed from the budget, as opposed to being added to the budget, is troublesome on some level, okay? And, and I'm not gonna sit here and yell at you, okay? I'm, I'm not sure why we're even looking at the general or the Air Force Base or whatever. Hunt Pinnacle is the fee permit owner of the property. They have an agreement for use, type of use, and parameters for use on that property. When there was a, when the Satellite Beach Women's Club held meetings, or held a forum on, before the elections, one of the questions was raised, what would you like to see done with 100 acres? Looking at the agreement now, none of the things that were brought up are allowed by the agreement. None of them. So, I'm wondering, I, I mean, I remember, I believe, Mark, you said you wanted, you considered a convention center, not allowed by the agreement. Would you like to bet?
No.
It, it's not.
Not the interruption?
It'd have to be, all of that would have to be modified, all of that.
But, but my point is, that Hunt Pinnacle is the fee permit owner of the property. The agreement is with Hunt and the Air Force, and what it seems to me, what we're trying to do, and was extremely troublesome to me, is we are hiring a lobbying firm to go around Hunt Pinnacle, the legal owner of the property, to put pressure on them to do something that we want that may not be in their best interest. And that's troublesome to me. A lot of the things that we wanted to do, we can't. Hunt Pinnacle cannot, unless you want to have a whole renegotiation of the agreement, and that's not between us and, that's not between us and anybody. We are sticking our nose under the tent where we have no seat at the table. None. And we shouldn't be doing this. I, you know, I, I read the contract. When you read it, the numbers are off slightly for a variety of reasons, but we're, we shouldn't be doing this. There's no, there's no discernible benefit for this whatsoever. The, the MGA people can't provide a discernible benefit, and we shouldn't be doing this just because it's just no, there's no reason to it.
Public comments still open. Here are none back to council. On the, saying it wasn't in our budget, well, during the budget process, we didn't have the agreement.
Right.
We, we were not in agreement. This wasn't part of what we were doing. And this budget process, if we go through our budget, starts end of April, May, through the summer. This was not part of the agreement by any means. And I, I disagree, yes, that right now, that piece of property, if I'm not mistaken, is zone residential.
Correct.
Correct? But we do have a say-so in the zoning there, and the government also has a say-so in what can and cannot go on that piece of property. It's a restricted piece of property.
The other issue is, yes, they're fee simple owners of the property, but they were sold that property to build military housing there, and they have a massive agreement to build military housing there. They have to work through those agreements, and they're bondholders.
They have to work through those agreements and their bondholders to sell the property. So if the military has no interest in military housing there, you know, the military is not going to do anything they don't have to do right now. So unless we have somebody up there pushing that, all it's going to do is help Hunt Development when they very specifically told me they wanted to sell the property.
And you're right, Frank. We do have every right to amend, that is a planned unit development. It's a pud. And the pud currently is set up for residential. But there is nothing that prevents us from changing that pud. And we went to Hunt and discussed these changes with them, and they were behind the changes that we proposed. So we're not doing anything out of our ability to put development on that property. And I know that, at one point in time, we were going to what, at the time, was the Nade Conferences, the National Installation Association developers. And it's changed names to ADC, and I think it's the American Defense Communities, I think is the acronym now. But that's where we ran into the Secretary of the Air Force. That's where we saw the three and four-star generals, because they were at these conferences. And you're right, Steve. We're not getting anything accomplished here. It's going up the ladder. But when we were attending those conferences, we had access to those people. And that access allowed us some of what we have gotten at that property. So, you know, there's credence to going up the ladder. And I'm hoping that Madison Government Affairs here can help us get up the ladder and get to the people we need to get to, because they're the ones that are going to make the ultimate decisions, not General Armando.
This is for Steve Hedley. Steve, I think that the bottom line is, is that nothing is moving on that property. And nothing's going to move on that property. And what the city manager has been doing, unbeknownst to me, I only found out about it a week or two ago, that she was working on this process and had been working on this, is looking for a solution to get that going. That seems to be one of the biggest concerns of a lot of our citizens, is why can't we get that property going? So that's, the idea is to try to find a solution to get that property going. And this seems like a viable way to get that process going. So we've got to do something with that property. It's just not moving. We can't let it, like Steve Osmer said, we're carrying those taxes ourselves because that property's not moving. So we've got to, we've got to move in some direction here, so, anyway. That's all I have.
You know, I spoke with Robin Vaughn from Hunt Pinnacle several years ago, and basically said it's going to take an act of God and an act of Congress for anything to change here. We're not in a unique situation. This issue has occurred all over the United States. We're not the only jurisdiction or entity that was duped, really. We were duped, basically. Be it what it is, I wish the city luck. I don't foresee anything changing there. They were smart. They were manipulative in a way. And they knew exactly what they were doing. Again, we're not unique. You can Google it. And it was happening all over the country. And I wish we had spent resources like this on the front end instead of on the rear end before that agreement was signed and before we took the burden on of providing services up there and not bringing in any tax revenue. Courtney, you said hopefully there'll be money in unrestricted reserves to pay for this?
We know there's, that's why we have unrestricted reserves, is for things that pop up. So yes, we have plenty of...
Okay, but and, and my husband is here tonight. But in my case, when the $22,000 came up to pay for the special master, it was made a specific voting item to pull money out of reserves.
Right. So that's what unrestricted reserves is for, and that's what council voted to do? So that's what I'm asking you to...
And my issue, my real issue here is that sharing costs with the EDC for expenses does not make the, just, we have a bidding process in the city. These firms, this is an odd unique firm, they're all over Washington DC. And I don't see how we can avoid, not that, you know, good luck trying to have this change, but I don't see how we can avoid going through a bid process and selecting a firm per our own city criteria. I don't think, I don't think that it's a sole source. There are many firms like this, and just by sharing the cost of the EDC or because so-and-so has military experience, there are a lot of people in Washington that have military experience, makes this a sole source.
I could ask the question, why did we give $100,000 no-bid contract to the developer that handled our CRA plan? The same thing was done, and it was for $100,000, not $30,000.
Don't, don't, or point of order, please direct that question.
You have, are you finished with the...
Yeah, I don't think we meet the criteria for sole source.
Okay, thank you. Further comments? You still have the floor. Further comments?
Yeah, I just, you know, I think you were duped. I think this, good luck with it. It was a bad deal to begin with. It was embarrassing. We're taking on the burden of the tax base up there, and I don't think anything's going to change. So I think it's really a waste of money. I'm not supporting it, though, although in theory, great, if you think you have the money, because I believe it needs to go through a bid process. And it's good old boys scratching the good old boys back here.
Thank you. As, I'm going to speak on this from the very beginning. Hunt Pinnacle wasn't the original purchaser of this agreement. Carabatta was. They went out, Hunt Pinnacle picked it up. We were never in agreement with Hunt Pinnacle. Also, this is, if I'm not mistaken, a restricted piece of property. There are things that cannot, that Hunt Pinnacle can't put on that property controlled by the government. I believe when we first entered into this, it was golf courses. We couldn't have Publix's and food stores on those.
Commercial.
Yeah, commercial can be there. We couldn't compete with the base was the main reason behind that.
Correct.
And so, yes, we are part of it. Hunt Pinnacle is not the sole part of it. The government is too. And it's still that way, if I'm not mistaken. And again, here's I feel. We're not doing anything with the EDC here. These are just someone the EDC uses.
Right.
And nothing more, nothing less than that. Absolutely not. And if they're coming here and we're saving, that's what we're trying to do, so.
It was also, it was also based on their experience with the base, our base, in our area, in our legislators. So I really wish people wouldn't make a conspiracy where there is none. It just, it just hurts our community. There is nothing here except I felt that this firm would be a great asset for this issue. If that's not what we think, that's fine. We can, you know, go somewhere else. But I really wish people wouldn't make a conspiracy where there is none. It doesn't do anything except start rumors that aren't true and, you know, and hurts, you know, just good people trying to do the right thing. So there's nothing here except the fact that I thought that this, this firm had the great, had great experience for what we needed, and, and that's it. And that is, that's it.
Further comments from council, Mark?
Just, Courtney, one last question. At some point in this process, and maybe this company can help us with this, if this is what we decided to do, can we leverage Posey's push on this process? I mean, he would step up from what you...
Oh, yes.
Okay, because I, I mean, we're going to need that at some point.
Yeah, because I asked, you know, his office, you know, about this firm, and it was interesting, when I always had the last conversation with them, they were having lunch with him the next day, so, so they, they know them really well, which is what we need, you know, that's the type of people we need.
Good information. Thank you. Further comments, then we'll go, I'm going to call it.
Yeah, I just think we have a procurement process. We made a snow cone vendor go out for an RFP. Yet we're spending 30 grand and we're not going through a bidding process. This firm may be very well awarded the bid, but there's a process to go through. And I had the same, the same issues with hiring attorneys, and some of those attorneys weren't even brought to us for discussion, yet they were just hired by the staff. And this is a problem. We have a procurement process, and we need to follow it.
Thank you.
This would be an RFP, so if that, you know, if that is something that you all want to do, we can certainly do that. You know, it's, it's just kind of surprising to me because we've done, you know, much larger things without that process.
Further comment?
This entity seems to be uniquely well-suited for what we need, the familiarity with the big players in DC as well as the players locally. So, you know, if we make the changes that I brought up on that agreement, I'm good to go with this.
Yeah, one last thing. If, if at the end of 45 days it ain't working, we can always drop this and go for yourself.
Right, we can end it after the first 45 days. So when we get that report, I think we'll all know whether we want to continue or not.
Yeah, I think it's a good fact-finding process for starters, yeah. To see what we, what we need to do, what we want to do. For something especially this big, we need to kind of move this along slowly, so, this, okay. Enough said.
Number, further comment? Call it. This one before, one more.
Councilwoman Bremer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis.
No.
Councilwoman Montanaro.
Yes.
Mayor Bubba.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Do we need a motion to take this from the reserves?
No, we'll bring back a budget amendment at the end for you to do.
Okay.
And because we may not have to take it out of reserves if we have a carryforward from this year.
Okay.
Okay. Now, further moving on to Agenda Item 8, and that's, excuse me, item for the next meeting. Courtney?
You'll be finishing up your first reading and developer's agreement for the Ramada site, and you'll be conducting first reading for the budget amendment. For end-of-year budget amendment.
Refresh my memory, what were we doing with medical marijuana? Did we kind of just push that off?
We, yeah, we postponed that because it needs to go through several boards.
Okay. It was talked about, that was one of the priorities in the Urban Planning Policy Committee meeting. And based on if it, if the amendment passes, the legislature, I mean, when, when is our window of opportunity closed for us to have stricter enforcement than what the legislature can deem?
I don't know. I don't know. Because I don't, I don't, I've seen a draft of some of their legislation, but I haven't seen when they were going to submit.
We're not going to know until the legislature adopts whatever they're going to adopt. I mean, in theory, they could basically preempt any regulation by local government.
Well, and that's why, that's why several of the cities that were in that meeting basically have already passed their ordinances prior to the amendment winning or losing, and they're grandfathered in.
Not necessarily.
No, no. That's what I'm saying. The legislature could just totally preempt the field and just say, this is, this is what's going to happen. Just because, I mean, Courtney and I did have that conversation, but the issue still is, is they could, they could go back to when it was approved. They can just say, you guys just went through an exercise, and that's all it was, is an exercise, because we're going to, we're going to tell you what you can and can't do as far as regulation.
Further agenda items, please, bring in the Courtney or myself.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the agenda for next meeting? Moving on to Agenda Item Number 9, minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 24th workshop meeting, the October 1st workshop meeting, the October 1st special meeting, and the October 1st council meeting. As, regular meeting as submitted.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro. Second by Vice Mayor Gatt. Further discussion on it? Any discussion on the minutes? Karen Nunn, Lenore?
Councilwoman Bremer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis.
Yes. Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro.
Yes.
Mayor Davis.
Yes, motion carries. Any further business before council?
Yeah, I have a request. I would like for everyone to put their microphones in a certain position at the beginning of the meeting, and then don't touch it, because every time somebody moves a microphone, it kills this. And I have to start all over again. And I, it's happening to Gabe also.
Okay.
So leave your microphones in place and don't touch them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further business before council? Here are none. Meeting is adjourned.